We've had a six-week executive session meeting. Mrs. Albert, here.
Here.
Mrs. Kozar, here. Mrs. Mayes, here. Mr. Muller.
Here.
Mr. Mezek.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. Zorch.
Here.
Dr. Locke, here.
Next week we will be bringing the resolution of the property asset builder consideration. Otherwise that's.
And I have had a legislative report, education planning, Mrs. Mayes. Thank you. We'll begin with the student report and just have classes.
Good evening. Courtney's a little cross-eyed, so stop by me tonight. The first thing I'm going to talk about is the National Auction Society trip to Boston. Being in the National Auction Society allows interested students to go on an annual trip to a city that they select. The choices were Chicago, Washington DC, and Boston. We decided on Boston this year. Students, some of them, the trip was free to them because of fundraising throughout the year, like the different, there were peds and fundraisers, there was a race at Christmas time, and all kinds of different fundraisers. The trip was a four-day-long trip in which students learned about the towns of Boston and Salem, Massachusetts. Many of the historical landmarks such as the site of the Boston Massacre, the Freedom Trail, and the House of Seven Gables, as well as the Salem Museum were highlights of the trip. Senior Abby Pratt created a six-minute-long video which we played now. Go there, if you're over in Boston. The second thing I'm going to talk about is the junior firefighters. Mr. Bill Watkins of the Craft Tree Volunteer Fire Department spoke with Mr. LaCassio, which then spoke to Mrs. Howe for the need and want of a promotional video regarding junior firefighters within the Lake Grove School District. So Taylor Kokoska of the Broadcast and Video Productions II Class was assigned the project, and she created a video regarding the want for junior firefighters, which we showed to the junior and senior high school students here at Lake Grove.
Are you interested in helping others? Do you want to get back to your community in a fun and exciting way? Help out getting volunteer hours that will stand out on your college applications? Then being a junior firefighter is for you.
So the reason why I'm doing the fire department is because I really like helping people with the pain from the water, the pressure, cars burning buildings, helping people fall in their life. As students, we're a part of the community in a positive and beneficial way. Another reason why I really like it is because I need to help people to see the side of it, like helping people to grow, to live, and experience. It's not many days you can go home and say, you know, I actually made a difference today. I helped somebody.
Students will gain leadership and teamwork, as well as fulfilling any community service hour requirements. And also, in the near future, we're hoping to set up a day's scholarship for the nearest place to fire fighters as well.
There is such a good day in the fire service. Every day is different. One day maybe you're coming to the fire call, the next day it could be another vehicle accident. In times of disasters or emergencies, you may be out helping with flooding conditions in the spring and fall, or all the times with bushfires or military raids, or other things. As far as training, that area is a world of competitive. You start off by being a junior program, then you learn basic fire training, and as you go through the fire service, you end up with more specialized training with the fires of the time.
Thank you, Honors. The enrollment report is attached. Do you have any comments, Mr. Turner?
No, I would just say that at this point in the year, we've concluded, not concluded, but we've done the major portion of our kindergarten registration. Kindergarten screening is done, and we have exactly 200 students registered for kindergarten at this point in the fall. If there's anyone out there who hasn't registered their child for kindergarten, if you're going to be five on or before August the 31st, you can give me a call, make a call in respect to the buildings, and get your child registered. 200, by the way, is about on pace for this point. Maybe a little bit behind, but more to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next Tuesday, we will have a junior high student report. We've done it. Special education monitoring results, about this long test.
So about every six years, Special Education Department is monitored by the state, and this was our lucky year. Our monitoring took place in January. There were a team of four people who came to Brandeis Road to review our standards, various documents, procedures, policies, records, and many files. There were about a little less than 400 criteria that are reviewed as this monitoring takes place. These things can range anywhere from signatures on IEPs and evaluation dates, timelines, all the way to standards of care that we provide, such as providing extended school year services to the more needy children, and providing assistive technology to children who have making visual problems, that sort of thing. So of the 392 criteria, we received concerns in six areas, which we're very pleased about. Four of those were simple file fixes, and two we will require plans that I will develop with the buildings in terms of how to address those standards of care. As I say to the special ed team, we want to do the right thing the right way the first time. We're not perfect, we can't always do all of those things, but we will eventually get it done the right way. So that's my report. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you. There will be a list of new contracts on your agenda for next week for approval, pretty much this is a yearly basis. Approved camp for physical and occupational therapy contract will be an agenda item, and there is an attachment there that you can read. And approved contract tutoring agreement for the 2015-2016 school year. This is an individual, Dr. Solis?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And also the contract there. And approve NHS of Pennsylvania therapeutic family care program agreement, and to approve an extended school year educational program contracts with NHS of Pennsylvania. And to approve the Presley Ridge Special Education Services Agreement. And to approve the senior high school counselor intern mandate of St. Vincent College, there are no. All of those have attachments except for the approval of the counselor. So if you have any questions, please let me know, and Dr. Solis will know. Next curriculum committee meeting date will be Tuesday, April 21st, at 5:30 here in the CSC, that will be next Tuesday. That's all, Pat. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mayes. Finance, Mrs. Albert.
Thank you. As you can see, there are items that will be on the agenda, and my voice isn't quite should be, so Mr. Watson is going to give us a report.
Thank you, Mrs. Albert. I just wanted to review quickly with you the finance committee meeting minutes. Some of the items that I'll review, you'll see, will be later on in the agenda on the under property supply, on the IU, and the CTC budget. But the first item is the 2015-16 budget update. I did a presentation, or I summarized last month, nothing has changed with what the governor's proposed. So unfortunately, more to come. As I had mentioned last month, he's proposed, the proposed increase would impact the district about $900,000, but there's a lot of ifs and buts tied to that, so there's nothing guaranteed at this time. We're cautiously optimistic, but we recognize that we might have to make some tough decisions because we might not have the state budget by June 30th. The next item I have is the 2015-16 EWCTC budget. You'll see, that's on the agenda for approval tonight. The impact of greater Lake Grove School District is $83,000. Excuse me. The result of that is our ADMs have increased, as well as our market share has increased. The driving factor that the CTC is dealing with is the PISers budget also, so they're dealing with that impact as well. Excuse me. The next item is the 2015-16 IU operating budget. That will, the board will be requested to approve that. The increase to greater Lake Grove School District is $6,300. The next item is the WIU Joint Purchasing Pay For Bid Award. The award recommended bidder, or to award to, is Unisource worldwide. They came in at $24.45 per carton. That's the increase of $1.82 per carton. Thank you, sir. I'm sure it's here. It's $2. I know that balances, but.
Put it in the budget.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. So WIU budget, we're looking at an increase of about $6,300. The majority of that increase is PISers, and I'm sorry, not the majority, all of that increase is PISers, medical costs. The, again, I'm sorry, I jumped back. The item I was starting on was the IU Joint Purchasing. We participate in that every year. The paper bid we're recommending is Unisource, $24.45 per carton. That's a $1.82 increase per carton from last year that was awarded. The Keller paper bid came in $34.44, that's actually a .36 per carton increase. Also on the agenda tonight will be the supply bids for general school supplies, art supplies, data processing, audiovisual, science, custodial, electrical. All of those items are being awarded to all the lowest bidders that meet bid specifications. They're all included in the budget that we'll be presenting at the May meeting. The next item I have on the finance meeting minutes are the pay plans for the personal care assistance. At the meeting, we talked a little bit about the Affordable Care Act and some of the healthcare requirements. I'll be sharing some additional information with the finance committee at the May meeting, so more to come on that. We'll be presenting those pay plans to the full board for approval prior to the June 31 expiration, or I'm sorry, June 30 expiration date. We talked a little bit about mileage reimbursement. Mr. Muller pointed out the Commonwealth Trip Optimizer, which I'm looking into. There are some agreements in place that might make, that we have to talk a little bit more about at some upcoming meetings. Tax assessment appeals. I have reached out to a third party to come in and talk to the finance committee at the upcoming meeting about reviewing tax assessment appeals for homes that were sold. So more to come on that. If I could jump back very quickly, back to the 2015-16 budget update. The one thing that I wanted to note in those allocations, the amount of money that districts around the state receive, you know, are really tied to a couple key points in Wolf's budget. The increased state tax and the increased sales tax. So I kind of lost over that very quickly, but that's included in that, please don't lose sight of that. So for the amount of money we put towards education these proposing, there are some other moving pieces that will have to get approval throughout that process. So sorry that I stumbled through that, they're like, thanks for the water. Does anybody have any questions on those meeting minutes or anything else under finance? Thank you.
Mr. Watson. And the next finance meeting will be on May 6th. Thank you.
Mrs. Albert, are we in class, Mrs. Kozar?
Yes, we'll have on the agenda next week, we have an order to approve change orders as listed. We will also be on the agenda, the purchasing of many Trek, 3400 L tractor with cat, salt sprayer, and snow blade, and a motor. We'll be opening bids, and those will be approved, and our last coverage flight mini meeting was April 2nd, and the minutes from that meeting are an attachment, and our next meeting will be May 7th at 3:30.
Mrs. Kozar. Through the student activities recreation, we have listed the senior nights, 40 girls and boys lacrosse, the boys tennis, the girls softball, and also the spring athletic recognition I will be Wednesday, May 27th. Our next athletic committee meeting is not able to say. Community relations, Dr. Zorch.
There'll be an agenda item to approve Development and Public Relations Office Intern in the summer of 2015, and Finance, University of Pennsylvania. I just want to say something about the firefighters, too. A lot of the guys I work with that are emergency, are farming, and they are so short-staffed came through. These poor guys, involved every time, are doing everything. Very, very few of them left that are doing it. I can remember when the fire departments were first, when I first came to this town, it was a lot of guys involved with the fire department. They had way too many guys responding to fire calls, they couldn't use them all, they sent people home. Now they're lucky, they have enough people to show up, to actually drop a truck to a fire call. These are, this is our community, and our community is covered by the volunteer firemen. They provide tremendous service for our community, and it's a shame to see how that service is like, actually. So it's a shame to see it happen. A lot of the guys are really stressed about it, and are very involved with it, and it's good that our school is looking into this and advertising it to students, because it would be a tremendous boost to our community, for the getting of. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Zorch. A little more on the IU, Mrs. Mayes?
Thank you. You have to talk about the.
Yes, yeah, I can. The IU, I touched on it very quickly in the finance committee meeting minutes, but we're looking at an increase of about $6,340, and again, 100% of that is a result of the PISers increase, going from 21.4% up to 25.4%, as well as the projected right now, 7% increase in healthcare. So we're looking at $6,340, so it would go from $40,000 to about $46,000, depending on your call.
Thank you. On your agenda for next week will be the Award Paper Bid for the WIU consortium, and the summary of the WIU Award Meeting Minutes from the meeting on March 24th are attached. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 28th, at 7:30 in the WIU Boardroom. And that's all I have.
Mrs. Mayes, Mrs. Kozar, the WCC.
Yes. We'll have our budget up for approval next week, and our next, our committee meeting on the March 25th is attached on the agenda, and our next meeting is April 2nd.
And so, yeah.
And board policies, Mrs. Albert? Thank you. You may have noticed in your community case from PSTA that there is a region three meeting and plans on April 2nd. We can't say anything. This is not the one that the breakfast legislative is, or I, this is the region three meeting. It comes in every day in the, you know, PA workday. And since we have a meeting, I can't go, and I don't know whether anybody else would like to drive, or text them, or the region three meeting, but I see one. Home Center is south, or somewhere down there, I'm not sure. I need GPS to find it, but anyway. And the final adoption of the board policies, which we had the first reading of, will be on next week's agenda, and those numbers are all on your agenda. Thank you.
Mrs. Zorch, transportation, Mrs. Mezek. Mr. Palmer, technology.
Thank you. On your agenda next week will be approval of our contracts for the CCL, our technology services, 2015-16 year, and we have a committee meeting this evening, and the committee minutes will be attached to your next week's meeting agenda. And also, we're discussing the budget going forward for this year of the technology department. Thank you. Oh, next meeting is, wait. Next meeting is when?
June.
June 1st, there you go.
Mr. Palmer touched on some of the major items from our meeting, but I'll just recap a few. We discussed the 2015-16 budget development for the technology department, really focusing on retiring the XP machines that we still have in the district, providing resources for areas that we have adopting electronic textbooks, and some building specific needs. So we're still in the process of finalizing that, but don't see anything really out of line from where we typically are with the technology budget. Mr. Palmer mentioned about the contract renewals that we do with our technology service support. I gave an update on the security camera install. They started the wiring, that's pretty much been completed. They started the server installation, and we'll hopefully begin the camera installation within the next week or two. And so the thought and the hope is that by early summer, early to midsummer, the project will be completely finished, have everyone training, and really hit the ground running, even prior to school starting in the fall. ECAT Academy, a couple things we discussed with our ECAT Academy, we have a consortium with the intermediate unit, so there is a course cost that we have for those courses, and we do charge our students a fee in some instances for those courses, and for the most part, we've kept that fee in line with what the teacher payment is. And we've made a proposal, because of the cost and the increase that we've been occurring in actually using those courses, that we'd like to propose increasing the student fee to be more in line with that, because at this point, it's actually kind of, it's actually costing us money to do that. And I was waiting on some final numbers from the intermediate unit, once their budget was approved, and so we've discussed moving forward with that. Broadcast and production studio, we had talked a couple months ago about doing an upgrade in the equipment that was there. That equipment had been purchased, oh, probably 10 to 15 years ago, with a partnership we had with a local company, and had never been updated. And because of the work they do in the studio, we wanted to look into providing the capability of a digital signal from the analog, and providing student capabilities, which will open up a lot of opportunities for our students. And the cost of doing the upgrade is a fraction of what the equipment originally cost us, and so we went ahead and proceeded with that update. I gave an update on our ECAT Academy enrollment, which pretty much remains stable throughout the year. And an update on our student information system. And a couple things we've been kind of stepping into is our students doing their course request online, and our kindergarten enrollment is actually completed through an online form instead of a paper form. So those are just a couple things for kind of rolling in with our student information system. Any questions? Thank you.
By next week, I would ask the board to vote on resignations of Richard Walters, John Scott Myers, Thomas Hager for retirement, and Lindsay Miller, who was going to be a school psychology intern for us, but has recently accepted an internship closer to her home. This evening, I asked the board to move on resolution number 195, which is the approval of the professional personnel substitute teachers that are listed. I think there are nine. And we're asking the board if they could approve those this evening instead of next Tuesday simply because of the need for substitutes at this time of the year and it gets them on our rolls just a little faster than waiting until next week. So I asked the board to approve resolution number 195.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments, including from the public, since this is the first time that's been on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those.
Thank you very much. And in addition, next week, we would ask the board to vote for the support personnel appointments that are classified, listed on your agenda, as well as the recommendation from the committee for the girls' basketball head coach position to be Mark Burkhart. And we would vote on that position next Tuesday. Under other business, there are numerous things coming up and as Mr. LaCassio says, after the National Honor Society induction, it has started the end of the year wave of things that go on in the school district to end the school year. And some of them are listed on your agenda, including the senior high school band concert, which is Wednesday, April 22nd. The EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, as I think Mrs. Kozar mentioned, is Wednesday, April 27th, 22nd, excuse me. Breakfast of Champions, there's two left this year. This one is Thursday, April 23rd. We have the jazz concert, junior and senior high school, on Wednesday, April 29th. And the board retreat is Wednesday, May 6th at LES at 5:00 PM. As well as, I just wanted to note, the EWCTC senior recognition night is on Tuesday, May 26th, it's always here at our senior high school auditorium. Those are just some of the items for the month of April and we will update you with those for May as we move forward. The board meeting dates, next Tuesday, we have our second meeting in April, the spring board retreat, the committee of the whole in May is the 12th, and the regular board meeting is the 19th.
Thank you all for spending the evening with us. If you're.